Good morning, everyone. It's nine o'clock. We'll go ahead and get started on today's Planning Commission meeting. Recommendations from the Planning Commission on certain items from this agenda will be considered by the Board of Commissioners at the regular meeting on October 6th, 2020, at 10:30 a.m. The Planning Commission utilizes speaker request forms, which are available in the Commission chambers during the meeting. The speaker request forms look like this. They're located in the back of the room. If you wish to speak on an item and you're not the applicant or the owner on one of the items, you can fill one of these out and throw it in the box here, right here on the dais, and I will keep me organized during the meeting. So, thank you for doing that. With that, we'll go ahead and get the meeting started, and Jim is on teleconference, so we'll go through and do roll calls.
Rich?
I'm here.
Charlie?
Here.
Jim?
Here.
Sandy?
Here.
Travis?
Here.
Kathy?
Here.
Deb?
Here.
Thank you. First item on the agenda is approval of the September 14th, 2020 minutes. Are there any changes or recommendations to update the minutes? Hearing none, seeing none, I would entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second, is there further discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, roll call vote.
Rich?
Aye.
Charlie?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Sandy?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
Deb?
Aye.
Motion carries, brings us to item number two, approval of today's agenda. Today's agenda includes consent items three through six, regular items seven through 10, followed by the county board report, items from the public, items from the staff, items from the membership, and adjournment. Is there any changes to today's agenda?
Did you want pull items yet?
No. What's that?
Did you want any that we were going to pull yet? I didn't understand that, Rich.
I'll do that on the consent agenda.
Yeah, I thought so. Thank you, I'm learning.
Hearing none, seeing none on the agenda, I would entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Motion and second, further discussion. Hearing none, seeing none, roll call vote.
Rich?
Aye.
Charlie?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Sandy?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
And Deb?
Aye.
Motion carries, brings us to item number two, approval of today's agenda. Item number three is conditional use permit review, CU 0839, for Patrick and Marlene Shealy to review an accessory structure prior to a primary structure in a limited agriculture district. The staff is recommending approval of the extension of conditional use permit, CU 0839, with conditions. Item number four is conditional use permit review, CU 1633, for Clinton Newly to review a single wide mobile home to be used as a permanent single-family residence in a suburban residential district, and staff is recommending approval of the extension of conditional use permit, CU 1633, with conditions. Item number five is conditional use permit review, CU 1737, for Ken Denke to review the use of a camper as a temporary living quarters, not to exceed 180 days a year in a general agriculture district. Staff is recommending approval of the extension of conditional use permit, CU 1737, with conditions. And finally, item six is conditional use permit review, CU 1818, for Rowdy Doughty and Laura Luthy, Real Simple LLC, to review a rental home park to include four existing mobile home rental units, and to allow an additional 10 rental units, which would include mobile homes and/or governor's homes, and to also allow a caretaker manager's residence and a shop building in a suburban residential district, and staff is recommending approval of the extension of conditional use permit, CU 1818, with conditions. Thank you. Are there, excuse me, are there any items that staff wishes to pull from the consent agenda?
No.
Are there any items that the membership wishes to pull from the consent agenda?
Four.
Item four? Okay. Anything else? Jim? Nothing? Okay. For those folks in the audience, the consent agenda consists of items three, four, five, and six. Our intent is that we would vote on them all at the same time. Item number four has been pulled and will be heard with separate consideration. Are there any other items on the consent agenda that you wish to be pulled? Hearing none and seeing none from the public, that brings it, that items on the consent agenda include items three, five, and six, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. And is that a motion for approval? Yes? Motion for approval?
Oh, yes.
Sorry, I just said, is there a motion? I'm sorry.
Yes.
So, motion and second for approval, further discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing none, seeing none. This will be it. Okay, roll call vote.
Rich?
Aye.
Charlie?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Sandy?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
And Deb?
Aye.
Consent agenda is approved, item number four.
Was there a specific question you had?
Yeah, I was going to try to make it brief for you, Cody. If you go to the page five out of six, you've got a picture. That's our picture for our review for recommendations. And then if you go farther back, and I have no idea what we're dealing with date-wise, then you've got a picture, aerial picture of the whole location. My question is debris. How can, you know what I'm saying is, I see this picture, we're not even on the property, and yet we're supposed to hear, expect, the rules all the way along indicated that the debris was supposed to be cleaned up, but on the other picture, it appears versus about six or seven other neighbors, his is a lot more littered than his.
Correct. So, our aerial picture only goes back to 2018. We don't have anything more recent.
So, two years.
Two years, in the past two years, he's been working with staff in the office to clean the property up. He's got a fence on the outside now. That's the only view into the property now, and then he put trees in front of it. So, it's, it was hard to see into the property, but it's cleaned up more than what that picture, way more than what that picture shows.
But he still has six or seven neighbors that could see into the property. It doesn't look like there's trees alongside of that, so I guess, all I'm getting is, we have a responsibility to see that it's continued to be kept up, or cleaned up even greater than two years ago, let's say. So, that was my concern, before I voted on it.
So, do you want to put the review instead of two years out? Do you want to do another year review? Is that what you're?
But I think, can, can we ask for a picture? I mean, are we, we should at least have a picture to look at, that we've seen some compliance or intent to comply.
Like, like an updated aerial, or actually, so, I contacted the owner, he never answered, he had a voice mailbox, was full, so I could never actually get onto the property. He has no trespassing signs, so I couldn't get onto the property. If you want to continue, so we can take more pictures?
All right, then, I'd like to add one more thing, that he provide us a picture then, if he doesn't. But at least then it shows an update with some sort of date on it.
If we reapprove it?
Yeah.
That makes sense.
Yeah, that can be done.
You could send a drone up to...
Yeah. Do we got a drone?
I don't think so.
If you don't have a decibel meter?
Sheriff's Office probably does.
Call a real estate agent.
Yeah. But I would like to add that, then, that we do include, I don't have any problems with the two-year review or anything like that, but all I'm asking for is the improvement and the compliance. So, if we could do something where he's providing the picture, I haven't got any complaints about that either.
When do you want the picture? By?
Almost say six months prior to the review, within six months.
So, you're recommending that we add item nine, that says something along the lines of the owner shall provide a picture documenting that he's continued to remove debris and upkeep the debris on the property? Something along those lines?
Sure.
Does that make sense?
I'd go along with whatever staff's wording would be, but just so you've got something to show to other people that, you know, I may not be the one here, somebody else.
Rich, number one says it, right? Is it the September 8th, 2019 one? Number one is that the subject prime remain free of debris and junk in vehicles, and then just say and provide a picture of updates, instead of add a number nine?
Yeah, so that we're not guessing. That would work fine with me.
Cody, and actually, I don't think from six months from now, I think by the next planning commission, maybe we have a picture of what it looks like.
So, again, I think we should just put a date on it, so that...
Instead of six months from now, you kind of want to see it now.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll move that we continue this item until the next planning commission meeting.
I'll second.
Motion and second to continue, further discussion?
I just want to clarify, you want to continue it with the understanding that he will bring a photograph showing the current condition of it, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Further discussion. Is there anybody in the audience that wishes to speak on this item? Is there any final comment from the public on this item before the planning commission Hearing none, seeing none, motion is to continue item four to the next planning commission meeting, which is what date?
October 12th.
October 12th. Roll call vote.
Rich?
Aye.
Charlie?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Sandy?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
Deb?
Aye.
Motion carries, brings us to item seven.
Item seven is mining permit review. It's to review the removal of gypsum hauled off of the site. The applicant is Cody Shad. The property is located at 3800 Marvin Road. It's 40 acres, Zone Limited Agriculture District. This was originally approved back on December 2nd, 2019. It was reviewed again on March 9th of 2020. Just a brief history, the applicant started work before a construction mining permit had been approved. He did pay those fees. There has been multiple instances of neighbors finding complaints for dust control and debris getting on the property. Staff went out on December 7th, December 13th, December 27th, January 7th, January 13th, January 14th, and found no instances of debris getting on neighbors' property. There was issues with dust control. When staff was out there, staff couldn't verify any dust was leaving the property, but depending on wind conditions that day, it could have happened on another day. Staff would never say that it never, or didn't happen. It was heard before the board on January 21st, and the applicant was told to work with the neighbors to bring the property into compliance and work through the issues. Then we get to September 16th, a preliminary injunction was placed on the property by the Seventh Circuit Court, basically telling him that he can't mine on the property and that he has to reclaim the land. I think the next trial date for that is February 3rd. With the injunction, and with condition number five in the past stating that he be done mining the gypsum in September of this year, staff's recommending ending the mining permit in 1903.
I'll move denial.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Move, meaning that we take away the mining permit review, or mining permit, whatever we do to, so he can't mine there anymore?
Do you need the permit?
Yeah.
All right, second then. Motion and second, further discussion. Normally, we would have discussion with staff, and it appears there's members in the audience as well.
Well, he also has some, Jerry also has some MSHA violations and stuff, too. For me, once you have violations from MSHA and other areas, then pretty much, you know, you're in violation already, so it takes away your permit. So, even if he's in court in his litigation, at this point, to me, you know, for me, it's not the court case, it's the violations that he has through MSHA, and that he's not mining properly and doing what he's supposed to, so.
Okay, further discussion on this item?
Can I, then we're recommending to...
Take his permit, Jerry.
Take his permit. I just wanted to be clear.
Yes, sir.
You're agreeing with staff's recommendation to end mining permit, 1903?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Further discussion? Is there any discussion from anyone in the audience on this item? We do have a speaker request form for item number seven. Please come forward, Kimberly Pearson?
Yep, my name is Kim Pearson. I'm the attorney for the homeowners of Marvin subdivision. I represent Mark Wiley and Pam Wiley, Tom Cantrell and Marion Cantrell, Robert Watts, Jessica Smith, Darren Smith, Gerald Mattson, Veronica Mattson, William Brown, and Kathy Wiley Brown. And you have heard from these homeowners on multiple occasions related to Mr. Shad's permitting and conditional use permit requests at 3800 Marvin Road. The permitting that was issued, the construction permit and mining permit, were issued inconsistent with the covenants running with the land to the homeowners, and based upon many comments by this board and the county commission, the homeowners had to hire me, and to date have spent quite a bit of money in order to enforce their property rights. We have sued Shad Corp., who is the owner of the property, and Cody Shad alleging breach of contract for violating the covenants and nuisance. We asked the court to issue a preliminary injunction to stop the violations and nuisance conditions. We also asked, and we will be asking the court for a permanent injunction at a trial in a few months. My clients attended that hearing, testified under oath. In open court, we entered a number of exhibits, and the judge issued the preliminary injunction. The court specifically found, as relates to defendants Shad Corp. and Cody Shad, that defendants were obtained a mining permit and has been mining gypsum from the property. Defendants attempted to obtain a conditional use permit for Lot 3R from Pennington County, requesting to use the property as a contractor's storage equipment yard and sawmill. That Marvin subdivision has restrictive covenants running with the land, which cover the use of Lot 3R and all of the property in the subdivision. Defendants, Mr. Shad, were informed of the existence of the covenants prior to purchasing Lot 3R. The covenants expressly provide that all lots within the subdivision are for residential use only. The covenants expressly prohibit, or provide, that all lots within the subdivision meet certain setback requirements as provided by county regulation. And the covenants expressly provide, no noxious or offensive trade or activity shall be carried on upon any lot, nor shall anything be done thereon which may be or become an annoyance or nuisance to the neighborhood. The covenants also expressly prohibit commercial activity or business activity from being operated or maintained on any lot within the subdivision. Defendants are mining and extracting gypsum from Lot 3R in violation of the covenants, which prohibit commercial and business activity. Defendants are further operating a construction equipment storage yard on Lot 3R, and have moved tobacco, trailers, and other heavy equipment in and out of the property via Marvin Road, which of course was the conditional use permit he requested and was denied. The sign requesting that conditional use permit is still hanging on his property and has not been removed, despite the denial of the conditional use permit.
So ma'am, can I stop for you for a second? As a government entity, we do not recognize covenants. So, what we do is, it becomes a civil matter which you are in now. That's why at this point, we do not deny, because we do not recognize covenants as a government entity. Since I was at the city, or here, or even at the state, if we'd like to, as commissioners or county commission, you can, if you'd like, make those stipulations, but I'll just keep saying, you keep saying covenants, and that that's between you and the neighbors and civil court, not what we do in government.
Yes, I'm fully aware of that. I'm also a former county attorney.
Okay, so I just wanted you to know that when you're reading...
I am reading the court's order and the findings of the court, so that this entity can understand what the preliminary injunction is.
Right, which is civil.
But it relates to the property.
Okay, but we just denied it, you know that, right? We denied his permit? So, at this point, we are following through with what MSHA and this entity believes is, it has nothing to do with the covenants that you are going to court with. Okay, thank you. Yeah, we're denying the permit.
Colin McNeese for the State's Attorney's Office. Technically, you guys haven't voted yet.
We have not voted.
So, you haven't denied anything, because we still have to get other comments and stuff, so I just want to point that out, I'm going to go some back.
Okay, so she can read all about her covenants, even though we know that we don't recognize covenants, and this is a civil matter?
Colin McNeese again. Deb, excuse me, Commissioner Haddock.
You're good.
Yes, she thinks it's relevant to your guys' decision, and although you guys don't enforce covenants, it is part of the civil case, like you said, and the court's findings that he can't do it, and then as part of the remedy for that, he has to return the land to its former state. So, I think that's relevant considerations for you.
It's temporary, so does he have to, at this point, turn it back to, well, not because of civil matter, but because of what we are saying, we've denied his permit?
Well, when you guys vote, if you vote to...
Deny his permit?
Remove his permit?
And?
End the permit, then he can't engage in any of the activities. The preliminary injunction is just that, it says he can't do this, and he needs to then...
Restore the property.
Return, restore the property. But the final trial on that's not until February, so he had to meet four elements, as Ms. Pearson has mentioned, and then it's also in the findings of fact and conclusions of law of the court. But, again, it's just a relevant consideration. It's something that he's probably not going to do until the final trial.
Yeah.
Because once that becomes a permanent injunction, but I can't tell you that for sure, because I'm not his attorney and I'm not him.
But at this point, would they have to go to court if they already, if today we end his permit, he no longer is on 3R, his conditional use permit is done, then, bottom line is, what would be the point of a court case when you just denied his, or ended his permit, mining permit?
Commissioner Haddock, I think I understand your question, and that's really a question that Mr. Shad would have to answer, as far as whether that's something he wants to pursue or not, but that's not something that I think this board needs to consider today.
No, I meant the neighbors at this point, if you ended, if we ended the mining permit today, what would be the point of going to court when he can no longer mine on that property? Because we can come back if he meets the MSHA and stuff, is that what you're saying?
Well, I can't speak to Ms. Pearson and her client's reasons for wanting to continue if, if this board were to vote to end the permit.
So, let me ask you something, Colin. So, if he met the MSHA requirement, if he met what he was supposed to, and we don't recognize covenants, and he comes back, and they went to court because of covenants, can he get his permit again?
The court wouldn't join him, so I think that's kind of what they're doing here, and I don't mean to step on your toes. But they're trying to get an extra layer of protection. So, the covenants, like you had mentioned, are a civil matter, and they protect them civilly. As you rightfully pointed out, the county commission doesn't enforce covenants. But, what you do do is enforce your ordinance and subdivision regulations, and he met all of those.
Right.
So, he was entitled to a permit. But, if you were to meet all of his MSHA requirements and all the requirements again, then Pennington County would likely have to issue him another permit. So, I think that's why they want to get the permanent injunction to ensure that doesn't happen again, and I apologize if I stepped on your toes.
Okay, so 3R basically is going to court over covenants, and if it becomes permanent, then this body cannot issue another conditional use on that, based on he went to court on covenants. That's my bottom line. I'm just...
Yes, and no, you're correct.
I'm also doing this for the neighbors, so they understand, so they're not going through the process, and then coming back and going, okay, I just paid lots of money, like Kim said, and then end up having to go back to court because they, it's no longer... You see what I'm saying?
Yes, I understand your question, and I think the answer to that, Commissioner Haddock, is that if he met all the requirements, we would have to give him a building permit, because it's ministerial. But if the injunction were in place, then he can't do those things. So, that, I think, is what they're trying to do, and if the injunction, which is, again, the civil matter, and that's going to be determined in February, that's going to be where they find their protection, not necessarily from this board, if that makes sense.
No. Are you guys getting that? It seems like at that point, the covenants...
Sort of, but I actually have a kind of tack-on question, just to make sure that I understand something. If we deny the permit today, due to all this...
We're not, we're not denying anything, we're ending the permit.
Ending the permit, I'm sorry. Ending the permit. What does that do for the reclamation process? I saw the court order, said he has to reclaim the land, but if we end the permit, which has the reclamation plan in it, if we end the permit, what does that do?
The staff packet indicates that the reclamation of the property will be covered under the construction permit, CP 1918, and the preliminary injunction.
Okay, I just want to make sure that the reclamation portion of it, that's what I was really...
Charlie, you had a question?
Yeah. And actually, we kind of answered it already, that's what I was wanting to stay away from. Drove by there the other day, there's some activity going on, whether it's what the court ordered that's being done, I have no idea, I didn't drive around and find out. But a question I always have for any of the neighbors is, where are these folks located in conjunction? I forget covenants. I would like to know where they're located in conjunction with this property. Just, you know, and I'm...
Charlie?
Up on this map here.
Yes.
I'll show with the cursor. So, this is Lot 3R, this is the subject property with the mining permit. This is Russ and Kathy Brown, and their house is right here.
All right.
Down here is Jessica and Darren Smith.
Okay.
Here's Gerald and Veronica Mattson, Mark and Pam Wiley, Tom and Marion Cantrell, and then Robert Watts.
Okay, they're all located along the entrance route to the...
Yes, this is, this is Marvin Road, that comes in, private road.
And, that does mean something to me as commissioner. In other words, who, if you have complaints, or if you have people objecting to something, that matters to me. And I realize covenants are in place on this, too, but that does matter to me, to who these folks are.
Yeah, the vehicles drive by all of their properties on, on the way in and out to that property, that's the only way in and out.
Okay, and then one more for, and then I'm done. The items are specifically listed on the injunction that he has to perform supposedly, I would say right now, prior to trial, is that correct?
That is correct.
I mean, he could object to it and get his own attorney to write why, but I'm saying at this point in time, a judge is saying, Cody, do this.
Correct, and it's likely, he's probably not going to do it until there's a permanent injunction, but technically, the court order does say he has to do it now.
Or he might do what's beneficial to him and not do something else. However, you're sure, or I'm asking you, then, we're not infringing upon any judge's order, or Mr. Shad's rights, by then ending something and sticking him out into the ozone layer with his activities? Because there was activity out there. Now, and like I said, I don't know whether it was just moving stuff around, but it appeared to be dirt.
Commissioner Johnson, I think what you can do, and what the entire planning commission can do, is really put the covenants to the side, and put the preliminary injunction to the side. I think there's enough facts on which you can base the decision to end or continue the permit, based on staff's recommendations, notwithstanding the preliminary injunction. Considering the preliminary injunction is certainly relevant. It's something that you can do. But, the court's order, if this board were to end or continue, would not have an effect on the court's judgment here.
Just, and why I was pushing this, is I'm hoping that our inspector doesn't become the inspector for the court as to what reclamation activity should, shouldn't be done, and how it's done, the quality it's done. That's where I'm coming from. I don't think we want to get involved in that situation, either where we're deciding that he's met our guidelines at some point, and maybe not the judge's or either. Follow me? Go ahead.
Cody Sack, environmental planner. So, in our in our ordinance under 507, and in the state, state law, there's certain requirements for reclaiming after you're done with the site. We wouldn't wait till February for him to get done reclaiming the site. If it's not done within a certain amount of time, he'll be, the property will be abated, and the county will go in and put, do your work, and then put a tax, I can't think of the word on it, but assessment on the property to reclaim the, to reclaim the site.
So you're telling me that in effect, we probably will end up the inspector, as to the correctness of the...
We'll only be, and then I'll only be the inspector for what our ordinance requires, which is 75% of what the former vegetation was there prior to him working. So once that's met, his construction permit will end, and then the county and us, we won't have really anything to do with it.
Are you uncomfortable with any of the listings of what the judge is asking?
That's out of my realm.
No, but I'm saying, will that all fit under what you're doing, going to do?
Yeah, he's gonna, well, he's gonna have to reclaim the property, and he's gonna have to reclaim it under what our requirements are before.
Abatement, I assume, while he's doing it?
Yeah, unless, I mean, unless he does it himself willingly.
Like that's what started this whole thing, was dust?
Mm-hmm. So if it's not, basically what it is, if the site sits dormant for more than 14 days, it needs, you need to start reclaiming it. So if he's not doing anything on it, he needs to reclaim it within 14 days, which I would, according to him, it's been more than 14 days.
I just wanted to make it clear that Cody, these things, and it's just like the neighbors, we've got the judge, and then we've got the county ordinances, and we've got the state involved there. It's very easy to have differences of opinion on how far you go on what and do what, and who's responsible for what. In this case, we are ending his permit. And what I'm trying to do is not stick us in a peculiar position. Something we can be comfortable, as well as any doors to get out of, on his responsibilities.
Yes, Commissioner Johnson, I just want to bring you guys back to whether, to the agenda item is whether to end it or not end the permit.
Go ahead, Kathy.
If I may, just, it strikes me as that, looking back at the history of this, that this permit was first granted in December 2019, and it was renewed or extended, we approved the extension of it in March of 2020. But one of the conditions of that approval of the extension was that excavation and hauling of gypsum from the site terminate in September of 2020, which is where at the end of September. So, the, even, you know, completely setting the civil case, court case aside, it strikes me that this mining permit has come to its natural end. And if this does nothing, if the other dirtwork, the reclamation and so on, as pointed out in our staff report, will be covered under the construction permit, which is still in place. So, I mean, it just seems to me that ending this mining permit is consistent with its natural end, which was spelled out in one of the conditions when the extension to, was approved in March.
Right. So either way, he's not going to be able to mine. We took his mining permit. He's not going to be able to mine also, because we ended his conditional use permit, because it's September, and we gave him a deadline. So, again, then, just telling the neighbors, unless he plans to come back, or we plan to do it again, but after this complaint, and based on these complaints, at this time, I'm pretty sure he won't even come back. So that'd be up to you, if you want to move forward with your issues that you're having with him on your property. Again, for us, we were trying to tell you that before, that covenants on us, unfortunately, do not govern us in one sense, and the other, we do listen to your complaints. But we also had Cody going out there, based on that, and had no findings, so at that time, again, we knew it was going to end in September, so just food for thought for you guys, if you wanted to move forward, or, like you said, the cost of this moving forward, and what that costs you as well, so, thank you.
Any further questions? Did you have anything else?
Yeah, I wasn't, I wasn't done.
Okay, please continue.
But I'll, I'll jump ahead. I have obtained what I believe is the entire planning department records related to the permits of Mr. Shad. The mining permit application was for 20 million cubic yards to be excavated. 20 million, and this, his construction permit was allegedly to build a pole barn. That is an excessive amount to be excavating, to build a simple pole barn, when there's already a very nice pole barn on that property. The construction permit is for a depth of 130 feet. A commercial building story is 14 feet. So his request on that construction permit equates to nine stories deep. One wonders what kind of pole barn needs to be nine stories deep. I'm not sure what inquiry was done prior to these permits being approved. There were certainly no plans presented. I have the entire file. There is no plans in the file. The mining permit, as approved, as we have discussed, does include certain conditions. Those included that he follow the conditions of the construction permit continually, which included that Mr. Shad follow all requirements, guidelines, and criteria for stormwater and erosion control. Those have not been met. That the site be revegetated as required by 507A5C, that has not occurred. That the permit be reviewed in three months, that did not occur. Mr. Shad requested and obtained an extension of his mining permit, and a review was supposed to occur three months after the extension, which would have been in June. That did not occur. At one point, staff did tell Mr. Shad he needed to install a silt fence. No silt fence has ever been installed. So despite these numerous issues and complaints, there's no record of any follow-up on the violations or the conditions since January of this year. It is now September. This was supposed to be reviewed every three months. At the planning commission meeting on May 26th, when the conditional use permit was before this board, Planning Commissioner Lassiter asked Mr. Sack when the mining permit was supposed to end, which Mr. Sack indicated would be up at the first meeting in September, which it wasn't, and that the permit would be reviewed in August with the applicant. And I've seen no record of that occurring. So to date, nothing has been reseeded, reclaimed, filled in, or erosion control measures put in place, like a silt fence. Mr. Shad has not complied with the terms of the permits, but no action's been taken to enforce those conditions. He has not yet begun complying with the court's order, which he does have to comply with immediately. That is the court's order, so when he doesn't, we'll have to go back to court and make him comply. However, because Pennington County granted this permit, it is incumbent on Pennington County to ensure that the proper cleanup and remediation measures take place. And it would certainly be appropriate for the planning commission to fully review the construction permit and revoke it in light of the injunction. It would certainly be helpful to my clients, who are taxpayers and residents, who've taken time out of their lives and away from their jobs to attend numerous commission meetings. It would be helpful if this board would enforce the conditions and the reclamation of the property. At one point, it was suggested that maybe bonding for permits, for these permits should be done. That would have been a fantastic idea, because this property is under a contract for deed, so what is likely to happen is Mr. Shad is going to do nothing. He's going to renege on his contract for deed, and the prior owner is going to be left with this mess. This board does consider the other entities such as Rapid City and different state agencies, when they are, when permits are requested. It would really be advisable to consider the residents of Pennington County, and the HOA, and the covenants, because they've had to go through like seven meetings that they've come to because of this? Constant battle. Now having to go to court, spend money that could have been avoided if there had been a little bit of inquiry, and maybe a condition that, one of the conditions of this permit is, you get approval by the HOA. So we support ending this mining permit.
Thank you.
Chairman?
Go ahead, Deb.
Cody, can you come up for just a sec? So, on record, nothing has been done, and there's no record of you ever going out there. Do we have records of you going out there, checking the properties? Because I know, as commissioners, as planning commissioners, we have had you go out there numerous of times. We have taken pictures of this. We also have to consider in our decision-making, both sides. So we take and consider the law, and by law, we don't recognize covenants. We keep saying that. Unfortunately, you could have an HOA, and again, HOA is covenants. We do not do that, because a lot of times, people should look at what, when people are doing properties, they don't always want to comply with HOAs. So they either get out of them, or they do something different. So you can, we can say do HOA, and they could just say, we're not going to be in their HOA. We don't want to be in their association. So you can say those kind of things, but I've been in politics a long time.
I'm not sure that you understand how covenants work.
Okay, actually, I do, because I've been in the city and the county, ma'am, and both times, every time I've been in covenants.
Are you licensed to practice law in the state of South Dakota?
Let's, let's just keep this to the facts here.
Okay, so, here's the bottom line, ma'am. We made decisions based on facts, and unfortunately, you don't feel their facts, and you're going to court with them, so...
And the judge found them to be facts.
I'm talking, thank you, and you can. If these guys want to keep paying for something, for you to keep representing them, that's fine. But the bottom line is, we are ending the permit. We are making him comply with these things that are on here, now that he has no mining permit. That's how, that's how we work in Pennington County. We can't make everybody happy, and we try to do the right thing by people. Because it didn't work out for your clients, go ahead and smile. I've done this a long time. We've done many good things for people. The way you are talking, we act like we don't do anything.
I've seen, I've seen it in other cases.
Hold on, ma'am.
Quit interrupting. Let's, let's hold tight here. I, I don't, I don't want any more interrupting in the meeting. Deb's gonna finish her questions for Cody, and then if there's further questions, we'll, we'll come back to you.
My bottom line is, our staff does a great job. They do what they're supposed to. They follow the law, and we respect that. If that doesn't comply with your rules and the neighbors' rules, I apologize for that. But I'm gonna back up Cody. I'm gonna back up our position at Pennington County. I think we do a great job, and we try to do both sides, and by the law and what we know. I'm not a lawyer, so I don't know all your rules and regs. I only listen to our lawyers and our staff members, ma'am. And if that doesn't comply with you, I'm sorry. But I'm gonna back up Cody. I'm gonna back up our people here at Pennington County. Thank you. Can we call for the vote?
You can call for the vote. We have another speaker request form, though, that I would, that I would like to get to.
Okay, thank you.
And Mr. Chair, if I may, again, I, I heard over the last couple of minutes that the permit has already been ended. Again, you guys haven't voted, as Commissioner Rundy has said, so it's still up in the air whether you're going to end the permit or continue the permit. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. The next speaker request form is Russ Brown.
Morning. My name's Russ Brown. I own the property just to the south of the Shad development. And with all due respect to the commission, to the staff, nobody, nobody but one person has knocked on my door and looked for damages, looked for debris, looked for dust. Nobody but one person.
Mr. Russ, in respect, I'll be up straight. We have, as commissioners, had Cody take pictures, and we also have drove in those areas. So we do look at it. We don't knock on people's doors, because we have people mad on one side or the other. We also, I haven't talked to Cody either. What I do is I, and commissioners, usually as commissioners, if I'm correct, we go and drive the area, so we won't knock on your doors, sir.
Ma'am, I've got a six-foot privacy fence around my property.
Yes, sir.
How are you gonna see, from the road, how are you gonna see any damages or any debris in my yard? You're not.
The pictures that were sent.
What pictures? The pictures that I sent.
Right, there's people that sent pictures of the debris.
But y'all, I listened to Cody talk several times about he did site visits
Right.
and found no damage. That is a lie. There is damage.
Okay, based on what you're saying. Thank you, sir.
I would just like to say, I never said there wasn't any damages. I said I didn't see any, like, sediment going onto the site, and I said multiple times that I would never say that dust never happened.
Thank you.
Thank you for the clarification. Is there anything further?
Nope. Call the question.
Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to speak on this?
When you called a question, there is no vote?
I understand that. I want to make sure that we're, we're following the rules set forth by the state as well. Roll call, though.
Rich?
Aye.
Charlie?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Sandy?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
Deb?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 8, layout plan.
Morning, commissioners. Jason Thunison, county planner. Just give me one second to pull my slides up. Agenda item number eight is Layout Plan 20-06. The applicant is Walter Jensen, and he has requested this layout plan in order to subdivide one lot, create lots 1A and Lot B of Columbus South Subdivision. As the property sits today, it is zone, limited agriculture district with a planned unit development overlay. That PUD was approved in October 2008 to allow specialty resort and a bed and breakfast for events. It was since then amended in November 2009 to allow for an additional 50 guests. The property is 20 acres. It takes access off of Nemo Road, is located in an undetermined flood hazard area. Contains a single-family residence, a pole barn, two on-premise signs, as well as a permitted onsite wastewater treatment system. Proposed Lot 1A will continue to be zone limited agriculture district with the PUD overlay, which meets a 10-acre minimum lot size for limited agriculture district, consisting of 17 acres. Will take access off Nemo Road, will contain the single-family residence, pole barn, two on-premise signs, as well as the onsite wastewater treatment system. Lot 1B, further east there, highlighted in green, will be zone limited agriculture district. Feature land use is rural ranchette. Lot size will be three acres, which does not meet the minimum lot size requirement for the current zoning. Will take access off of Nemo Road, and is vacant of any structures at the time, at the moment. The request was sent out for interdepartmental review. I had a couple of comments that came back. First one from County Highway, stating that both Lot 1A and Lot B must use the existing approach off of Nemo Road, and existing drainage ways must be maintained and not obstructed. These are captured as conditions of approval. And the second comment that came back was from the County Flood Plane Manager, stating that the subject property is in an area of undetermined flood hazard, flood hazard zone D. However, there is concerning, there is concern of flood hazard from Box Elder Creek, as it flows through the entire subject property. As you can see here, I highlighted it red, kind of the outer bank. As you can see here, I highlighted it red, kind of the outer banks of Box Elder Creek. You can see historic flooding there in this area. Uh, staff, as of writing this staff report, uh, we were in conversation with the state FEMA representative, uh, as to what we could enforce, uh, as far as him actually having a flood study done on the property. And it turns out that Pennington County in our flood plane ordinance doesn't have anything that would enforce that, nor does FEMA. So at this time, uh, staff would like to, uh, change condition number six. And have that read, that prior to minor plat submittal base flood elevation data should be established for the proposed lots to indicate any potential special flood hazard area.
Should be.
Should be. And staff's analysis of the request is that proposed lot one B is three acres, which is below the ten acre minimum lot size requirements for limited agriculture district. Therefore, the applicant will be required to rezone the lot to an appropriate zoning district or obtain an approved variance to zoning. And planned unit development amendment, PUD zero nine zero eight, will need to be reviewed once the new plat is filed with the register of deeds to ensure new legal description is updated and that approved conditions are being met. And lastly, uh, sorry. Staff finds no significant issues with the applicant's request as it appears to be in harmony with existing lots and current land use in the area. And staff recommends approval.
Thank you. Are there any questions on this item?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Kathy.
Um, on the third page, three of six, under where you described lot one B, on item two, future land use rural ranchette, three acre minimum. I thought rural ranchette was a five acre. I thought it had to be, uh, low density suburban to do three.
Uh, so with the new zoning that came with our comprehensive plan, we renamed all those zoning districts. Our, our section two hundred is, is in the works to be updated now. I believe rural ranchette is three acre minimum lot size.
Really?
Oh, it's five. Oh, oh, my mistake.
It is five. Okay, that's what I was thinking. Yeah, okay, thank you.
Apologize for that.
I have two questions. Um, the first one is underneath the analysis, uh, item D, uh, it's a planned unit development will need to be reviewed once the new plat is filed with register of deeds to ensure the new legal, legal description is updated and that all approved conditions are being met. And my question is the sequence of process. If the new plat's filed and it's not, and it doesn't ensure the new legal description is updated, um, or the PUD doesn't happen at the same time, i- is there a, are we going forward on the plat without, should the PUD happen at the same time to make sure that they're both being approved at the same time?
Right, we'll try to line those meetings up about the same time that they file with the register of deeds. Jerry has it on the calendar now to trigger that once it is filed.
It just says that the, that it will be filed with the register of deeds and I'm thinking to myself, once it's filed with the register of deeds, we may be too late.
Right, I, I was concerned about losing visibility on it too. That's why it's on Jerry's calendar. So we'll get it on the, the first meeting after it's filed.
Okay, all right. And I'm not a certified flood plane manager. Are you, are you CFM?
Yeah.
Okay, so now my next question is your discussion on item number six. Um, the, uh, back in the day when I used to do a lot of this type of work, um, there, I think it's entirely reasonable that this board require them to show or illustrate that these structures, um, would be out of a theoretical flood location and so in, in areas that have not been mapped, if, and that's this situation, is that correct?
That is correct.
Um, but the, but Box Elder Creek does have peak flows during flood, uh, various flood sequences, ten year, hundred year, all this stuff, right?
Assuming so, yes.
Okay, so, um, i- isn't there a process, um, that FEMA has where, where you go through and you estimate flood elevations in zones that have not been mapped?
So it's a requirement that they provide that data in a zone A, which is identified special flood hazard area, but it's unstudied. So if that were the case and this property was in zone A, then they would be required to provide those base flood elevations to us. But since this is zone D and it's unstudied at all, there's no requirement through FEMA or our flood plane ordinance that would make them do that.
Couldn't they theoretically go out and take cross-section measurements across the creek and the, and the drainage ways and then know the, know, know the, the, the conveyance amount and, and estimate that?
They, meaning FEMA or they being the property owner?
They being the property owner.
They, they certainly could.
What I want to make sure is, is that, uh, just because enough information isn't there today, doesn't mean that we allow someone to go do something that, um, they could figure it out or they could at least get a very good estimation of what it should be.
Right, I would, I would, as staff, uh, we would highly encourage they get a flood plane study done on that property because as you can see here on the, the slide, uh, there have been historic flows through there that exceed the banks of Box Elder Creek.
I agree, because he always changes that FEMA map. So you're right, Rich, they change it depending on, I don't know what that depends on, but I've seen it in the years. I, I've seen it over the years and you're an engineer and Kathy is, they've changed those FEMA maps a lot, so.
I know that because mine went from a zone X to a zone A all of a sudden.
So zone A means flood hazard and anything past flood hazard, the hundred or five hundred year, they're not requiring anything?
They would be required if this was zone A. They would be required to provide that, those base flood elevations to us.
So A is flood hazard and B must be hundred year flood plain? Or it's not, A is the whole?
Zone D is what we're talking about here and this, that means that it's unstudied.
No one's just gone out and done the physical work in the field, uh, and cross-checked it and so it does, there is no map.
So legally by our standards, can we still put that on there that they should require it based on what we've seen in the pictures?
That's why I changed the, uh, condition number six to they should do that. Staff would highly encourage they do that for future development just for, uh, their own safety, but we don't have anything from FEMA or in our flood plane ordinance that states they have to do that.
Okay, well.
Can I ask a question?
Go ahead.
You might have to answer this too. We had a number of those years ago around, uh, Johnson siding in the building, uh, that we used to require them to do some special because not, the maps didn't exist, uh, on that site or that sort of thing. Do you remember that, Brittany, when you first came here?
Um, I don't remember that specifically because I wasn't so much into the flood plane. Um, just with the zone Ds, they're somewhat frustrating because it's obvious you can tell there's potential for flooding. I mean, I think it would be, um, not on, you know, not in a good or poor taste for us not to actually acknowledge it and, and make the property owner aware. There's another plant that has a similar situation on the last item, it's the same thing. It's obvious there's a creek that goes through there, it's a zone D. It's just that they didn't study that area. That doesn't mean that the flood potential isn't there. So that's our concern and bringing it to light, I think, to the property owners and to the surveyor is important, um, whether they agree, um, and want to do that, I guess.
We used to, one of the things we did, I do remember, was actually make them file a plan. We had it in our, in instructions or conditions that they had to file a plan, emergency route leaving or something because we could see that it wasn't, uh, was a potential, uh, for that and they had to have that when they went to, for their building permit. That was one of the things I remember we did, but there are a couple of them, uh, that we, and I remember most of them were up near Johnson siding, how the stream meanders up there, but just throwing that in for what it's worth.
I would probably recommend that when we, um, come to you with our flood damage prevention ordinance, um, that this will be addressed, uh, moving forward, so.
I'm gonna extend off what Charlie just said and, um, is there anything in the building permit that, that has teeth that requires a building to be out of the flood plane, flood way, even if it's not mapped?
Nothing that speaks to it, uh, being unmapped, no.
Any further questions?
One more thing, we do make them do fire mitigation pro, uh, things now, don't we? Could we do something in that sort of? I mean, we do with properties, we've done included fire mitigations, haven't we, in conditions and stuff?
Right, so.
Couldn't something like that head in that direction perhaps in our ordinance? Maybe not on this because it wouldn't, wouldn't be appropriate.
Right, so our flood damage, uh, prevention ordinance is coming due, uh, to be reviewed and this will be captured in there going forward. So that's how we'll address it.
I'll be quiet.
Further questions? Hearing none, seeing none. Um, there's no questions from the public on this item. Either recommendation, uh, from staff is approval of layout plan LPL twenty dash two two with eleven conditions is their motion. Motion and second, further discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, roll call vote.
Rich.
Aye.
Charlie.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye.
Sandy.
Aye.
Travis.
Aye.
Kathy.
Aye.
Deb.
Aye.
Motion carries, brings us to item nine.
Good morning, Stephanie Jansen, planner one. Item nine is layout plan LPL twenty twenty seven for Keith and Lona Lau. On August twenty fourth, twenty twenty, the applicant's applied for a layout plan to subdivide lot five of the Lau subdivision into two lots, creating lot five R and lot six. The purpose of the subdivision is to have a lot for their son to live on. As it sits today, the existing lot five is zone low density residential and it contains a farm utility building. In addition to the farm utility building, a manufactured home with attached garage and covered patio and a prefabricated storage shed. There's no special flood hazard on the property. Um, proposed lot five R would be three point three two acres plus or minus. The proposed lot six would be one acre plus or minus. The one acre lot would need to be rezoned or they would need to obtain a lot size variance because it does not meet our future land use, which is low density residential where the minimum is three acres. Staff found no significant issues with the applicant's request and staff does recommend approval of layout plan LPL twenty twenty seven.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff on this item?
Jim.
Kathy, go ahead.
I just have one question, comment for just kind of point of curiosity. You know, by the way that the lot is configured and there's that, they, you know, the access point off of High Seega Road and so on, I mean, that probably has some, there's probably something, you know, in the history of all this that made it that way. But now, given the, now that this other road, Wheaton Road is construct, probably Wheaton Road wasn't constructed at that time or something, but why, why couldn't they do an access off of Wheaton Road? What would be problematic about that?
Um, all I know is that when they originally subdivided the lot, because it's been subdivided before, um, they were told that they needed to have access off of High Seega Road and then County Highway had a comment saying that they would like them to use that same access because that's what was previously addressed.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I'm sure it, that's the established driveway, so it's all, all fine, but I was just thinking, what would be wrong with that? I just couldn't quite.
And the applicant is going to use that access.
The existing one.
Correct.
Right, so it's, it's not, it's not a point really, I was just curious. Thank you.
Sure.
Stephanie, I think I can help. I was on the board when that came up. Most of the neighbors, they increased the density, Mr. Lau, considerably on this particular, it goes a little farther yet out of our picture. And most of the neighbors, uh, indicated at that time, uh, the Wheaton College, uh, the gentleman that's the, uh, uh, nursery at the end, towards the end of the road, Mr. Ardency, all those folks paid for that road and they did not get in his way about increasing density, but they were quite vehement that he wasn't going to use their road.
Okay.
He could use the same access, but that's my concern about this division is because now, uh, one of the homeowners you can see now is losing his buffer from that increased density that was done a number of years back with no conditions. He says it's for its son and that's fine and, and well and good, but now we got one acre sitting alongside of three acre requirements. And you do indicate that he's got to come in for a rezon. But I think if we approve this today, all we're doing is heading into one of those things where it's contentious. We're gonna have all these people that came back in here originally years ago about the increase in the density in the first place. Uh, I'm not sure I, I can go along with the, the one acre because I, I remember what was involved in getting the density there in the first place. And that buffer certainly had that neighbor not concerned about a one acre lot sitting alongside him. Thank you.
Right, and this is just a plan, a layout plan, so that we can vet out these issues beforehand.
But, you know, if, if I may, I, I don't quite follow because when I look at like this map right here.
Sure.
I just see a tremendous amount of suburban residential right across Wheaton Road and there's all sorts of homes on lots that I didn't really look all these up, but they looked to me to be, you know, well, it's, it's, it's suburban residential, so they're small lots.
Sure.
So I don't quite understand, um, I guess I don't understand, granted, there's one we would create or that we would allow the creation of a one acre parcel north of Wheaton, but considering all this, all these small lots, I just don't understand what, what the trouble would be.
Yeah, I can help out a little bit. There was another element that was involved and that was the water that from the, I believe it's Sanders Water District, uh, that goes in this. And then that was available to him if he increased the density over there and that was also a factor. That was not that dense at that time. There was like one or two lots over there total on that side of the road when it took, uh, don't hold me to this, but I know it was three years, two to three years in review before that was done. That's how contentious it was for these other people as you'll notice, these other folks have all large pieces of property.
Right, but I mean, right now, there's a lot of the suburban residential.
These were large, this was large up here and it was contiguous and, and, and went along with that. These others, they lived alongside them, but they put that road in there, the, these folks that have the larger pieces of property, that's, and they stayed out of its way as long as he stayed off the road at that time.
So do they have enough water in that area for their suburban, uh, residential already and then they'd be adding to it? Is that an issue in that area?
I would have to do some research on that one.
Okay. Brittany, you know anything about it?
I do remember that now that you said that.
Sanders Ranch Water District.
And that we would have to contact the water system, um, and that's part of the subdivision regulations, um, for the preliminary plat, that they would have to meet that portion of it. Uh, we could get ahold of that, um, water district to ensure that they will provide a, a tap and water to that.
So this is the, like, um, these guys said, it is the layout plan, so at the next preliminary plan, we could have some of that information of how they're, um, doing their water systems and stuff too, to satisfy, to make sure we're doing things right.
The people, just to help you there, the people behind, they're, I'm pretty sure they're on their own wells, in the yellow here.
And it looks like what's happening is all those low density up front, uh, Charlie, are turning to suburban, they're selling their lots and that's usually what happens is once they see people can make some money off their properties, they're gonna start, um, turn them into.
I believe the one acre will go up per se, oh yes.
Yes, sir. Well, I think that whole area is gonna end up doing that eventually because of cash flow.
Further questions? Note, there is no one from the public in the audience on this item. Uh, recommendation is for approval of layout plan LPL twenty dash twelve with twelve conditions. Is there a motion?
Also move approval.
A second.
Motion and second, further discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, roll call vote.
Rich.
Aye.
Charlie.
Nay.
Jim.
Aye.
Sandy.
Aye.
Travis.
Aye.
Kathy.
Aye.
Deb.
Aye.
Motion carries, uh, brings us to item ten.
Good morning, commissioners. Brittany Molitor again. Item number ten is layout plan LPL twenty dash twenty eight to subdivide and create lots one through one hundred and fourteen of Preston Ranch subdivision. Um, this property is located along South Highway seventy nine, along the Custer County and Pennington County, um, county lines. The applicant, John Preston, is requesting to subdivide approximately five hundred and seventy seven acres into a hundred and fourteen lots. The lot size will range from approximately three and a half acres to fourteen acres. This, the plan is to develop in three phases. Phase one will consist of approximately thirty seven lots. Phase two will consist of forty lots and phase three will consist of thirty seven lots. A portion of this subdivision is also located within Custer County.
Eleven of the lots are, 11 additional lots are located in Custer County and will take access off of Shore Road within the subdivision portion located in Pennington County. As the property exists today, there are three parcels that are shown above. They are zone general agriculture district. The future land use is agriculture for these. One of the lots is 100, approximately 117 acres. The special flood hazard area on these properties is the Zone D, which is a possible but undetermined flood hazard. This lot does contain a 40 by 60 barn, a 24 by 64 loafing shed, a 17 by 35 greenhouse and a 12 by 12 shed. And the access off of this property is off of Murphy Road, which is a Pennington County highway road and is maintained by the highway department. The second lot is zone general agriculture. The future land use designation is agriculture. It's approximately 279 acres. The special flood hazard area is Zone D again, there's possible but undetermined flood hazard. This one is vacant of any structures and access is off of Shore Road and South Highway 79. And finally, the third lot, which is the southernmost lot that borders Custer County, is zone general agriculture. The future land use is agriculture. It's approximately 181 acres. The special flood hazard area again is Zone D. It is vacant of any structures and access is off of Shore Road and South Highway 79. So the proposed lots, Phase One, I'll show here, would be in the green. This is along the Custer County, County line. And the lot sizes will range from 3.3 acres to 8.11 acres. A lot size variance or rezone would be required for all the lots in this phase. Lot two, or excuse me, Phase Two is shown in the pink. Our lots 38 through 77, the lots will range in size from 3.4 acres to seven and a half acres. And a lot size variance or rezone will be required for all the lots in this phase also. And lastly, the Phase Three is the shown in blue. It's Lot 78 through 114. The lot sizes will range from 3.39 acres to 14 acres. A lot size variance or rezone will be required for Lots 78 through 80 and 82 through 114. This was routed around through the Department of Review. There were some items that came back. County Highway would like to see a drainage study to verify that post-development flows do not exceed pre-development flows. Roads within the development need to be built to ordinance 14 standards. Murphy and Shore Roads need to be improved to asphalt surfaces in accordance with ordinance 14 standards. Additional comments from Highway was that prior to completion of Phase Two, Murphy Road will be improved to an asphalt surface from South Highway 79 to Shore Road. Prior to completion of Phase Three, Shore Road will be improved to an asphalt surface from Murphy Road to the county line. And that the interior roads can be gravel and built in accordance with ordinance 14 standards. The environmental planner did make comments that this area has a significant amount of shale, that shale is challenging for conventional on-site wastewater treatment system. Staff does not support waiving the soil profile hole and percolation test requirement for this area due to the soil types and geology. Due to the number of lots and very limited soil types in the area, a lagoon or community system to serve the subdivision is recommended. And there is attached soil and geological information for the proposed properties in your packet. I also do have them on this slide. Other things that came back, the South Quarter Department of Environment Natural Resources Drinking Water Program did come back that Black Hills Rural Water System will be supplying water to Preston Ranch subdivision through their Paramount Point Water System. Each lot of Preston Ranch subdivision will be individual uses of Southern Black Hills and Southern Black Hills. Will maintain the distribution system within the subdivision. And there is adequate drinking water capacity to serve Preston Ranch subdivision. And they are aware that any plans, excuse me, the applicants are aware that any plans and specifications must be submitted to the drinking water program at DENR for approval. Black Hills Electric Co-op would request that their current facilities be shown on the plat before the final plat is approved. This was routed to Custer County. Staff did speak with the Custer County Planning Director and the Highway Superintendent. They are in agreement that Shore Road be, have an asphalt surface. So they are in agreement with that and they would like to work with Pennington County closely on this plan so that the, it is consistent throughout the process. This was also routed to the Department of Transportation. They have looked at those existing approaches off of South 79. The applicant will have to get approval of those approaches, but they do not believe that the, that the approaches are appropriate and there wouldn't be any additional turning lanes required for those. So as far as what staff is concerned about, a rezone would be required to allow future subdivision. Due to the very limited soil types and shale, staff is recommending a community lagoon or drain field. And Murphy and Shore Roads would need to be improved to asphalt surfaces as they are maintained by the Pennington County Highway. And staff is recommending approval of this layout plan with 35 conditions.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff?
Just a couple on the drainage, the road by County 14 standards, the asphalt surface on Murphy and Shore Road and the community lagoon. For me, those are going to be huge things on the prelim, not the layout plan for now because you guys will bring your set of plans next. We have had too many phase areas in Pennington County where the second access hasn't been finished, different things like that, so I'll be looking for that. Because what happens is, is Phase One doesn't pan out quite well and the second access is in Phase Three or different things like that that are happening, or Shore Road won't be done till we get into Phase Three. To me, all of those things that I mentioned, I think need to be done before in Phase One. Just because if it's going to pan out, that's great, but if it doesn't, we're getting stuck in Pennington County with substandard roads, no second accesses and drainage areas that are incomplete, holding ponds, things like that that are not complying with Phase Two and Phase Three because I didn't do it, it was Jim's fault or whoever. But for me, that's pretty important for me for the future, just so you guys know, that's my personal thought, not, not this board. So just from seeing it in the past and being here for, what, five years, almost six years, those are some of the problem areas. I'm not against this development. I think it's, it can be good. And bottom line is if those things can happen right away instead of in phases, for me, works a lot better for me to approve something.
Well put. Any further questions?
I have one question.
Kathy?
Brittany, regarding the study to show, the drainage study to show that the post-development flows do not exceed pre-development, studies like that, do they do that assuming that all the houses are built and that the, there's, there's, you know, asphalt or, you know, concrete in front of their garages and so on? Or is it, those studies done before the houses are built? I mean, how does that work?
So with the drainage study in a subdivision, and we've seen these in other subdivisions like Murphy Ranch, they take into consideration all impervious areas, which would be roofs, any.
Once the house, they assume that the house, it's all built out and then here's what the result would be?
Correct. And with the roads and the asphalt and the drainage, most subdivisions of this size would require some kind of detention facility.
Right, that's what, so that, so in other words, okay, that's what I wanted to make sure that the drainage study took into account, count the situation when it was fully built out and you're saying it does?
Correct.
And number, so number 18 is really the response to number 12?
Correct.
The drainage improvements would be done, which would be the detention pond or something?
Or something similar, correct.
Yeah, okay, so that's why I was making sure that 18 and 12, one was the analyses and then one was the solution to the problem or to the situation?
Correct. So when they submit their drainage information, our office will send that over to the drainage engineer at the highway department for review. And so any comments that he would have on that drainage study would be forwarded to this commission as part of the preliminary plat process.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any further questions?
Yeah.
Since Pennington County does not have billing codes, and I don't suspect that we're going to head in that direction in a big hurry, maybe we are. The soils study that was put in here is indicative of not real good soil conditions. And you've got structural things that go along with those soil conditions, not just septic. And we've had, had a previous problems in this county and we have very plastic soils here. I think somewhere along the line, we've got to look at having conditions in regarding to the structural integrity of the foundations that go into these. A lot of these places are built and rightfully so, I support it. They're sold as spec lots and, and a contractor moves in and we have a lot of those contractors builds the place. Well, we also find out that one contractor has a different level of building expertise and maybe how he applies his versus another. And, and if we don't have some structural specs on foundations with our soils, I think I'd be concerned continuing to look at these sort of things. But I realize that, that, that condition doesn't belong here, but I think I'm going to join Commissioner Hancock's comments there too. I think they need to know that down the road, these things are important to us. Thank you.
And then maybe in the future, we have licensed contractors, so that might help because once you have licensed contractors in the county, then you find if they are not building, you know, indicative to making good houses or, you know, building stuff right, you can also revoke their license in the county, which then you, at that point, you're not having the inspectors and everything. I mean, that could be a futuristic thing, but I think the licensed contract, contractors would be a, a good step for Pennington County.
Thank you. Further questions? I have a slew of them, so I was letting everyone else go. And Brittany, if you can answer these, I can, we can let the, the folks in the audience to maybe address them, but I'll start with you.
Okay.
You said Southern Hills will maintain the system within the subdivision as well?
Correct. That was the comment from the drinking water program, DENR.
Okay.
That they would, and I also made that a condition of approval, that they maintain some kind of agreement and they filed it with the registered deeds. So there is maintenance of that internal infrastructure within the subdivision.
Okay, so, yeah, so they, they will need to follow the requirements of the state for the water system as well as the Southern Hills requirements? Is that, or, or, Southern Hills will own the system when it's done?
In that I do not know. As far as, when I had talked to the state at this point, I just wanted to verify that water was available and that the capacity was able to do that. As far as them negotiating, whether it's the HOA or a sanitary district internally, I don't think that that has been determined at this time.
Okay. So your thought is, is that there would be some sort of lagoon system for the entire subdivision? Is that, that, that's staff's recommendation?
Staff's recommendation is that there is some lagoon or community system. If there are soils, it would be conducive of a larger system. Just looking at the soil maps and the geology and the amount of shale in the area, I think some of the lots would be difficult, if not impossible, to get anything on but an ET bed or a mound system. So those are just staff's recommendations.
Okay. But none of that's been submitted by the applicant yet?
No, this is very preliminary.
Got it. I'm not exactly, I, what, familiar with what, was it something 14 standards, road standards?
Ordinance 14.
Ordinance 14 road standards? So I'll have to dig into that and, and review that, but those are the, those are the county standards for roads, local systems, those types of things?
Correct.
Okay.
So when I did talk to the highway superintendent, he was in agreement that he felt that the internal roads within subdivision could be the 24 foot wide, six inches of gravel with the two foot ditches. He felt that those would be okay on the internal. He also stated that for a road district, those are much easier to maintain and keep up as far as monetarily wise versus an asphalt. They did recommend that Shore Road and Murphy Road be brought up to asphalt standards. And Custer County was also going to require that on their portion of Shore Road.
So that was my next question then.
Can I throw in, did, would that mean then the 65 foot right-of-way as well for the ordinance 14?
So it'd be, it's the 66 foot, and I do believe that some, both of those do have a fair amount of right-of-way there.
So the, they would, this hasn't likely been submitted yet, but the idea is, is that the homeowners association would maintain it with the, with road district or something along those lines?
Correct. With this, with the number of lots that are out here and the amount of internal roadways, that would be a.
The county would not take over this new road system?
No, the county already will maintain Murphy and Shore Roads.
Okay. I didn't see anything about utilities. I know that there's power that runs along the highway there. Is there gas and fiber optic, all that stuff out there?
I do not know the answer to that. I do know that Black Hills Electric Co-op did want to have their facilities identified on here.
Okay. Is there any estimate on the number of years that the developer is planning for the phase out of the specific phases?
That would be a question for him. He's.
Okay, we'll let, we'll let him do that one. We, there was already a bunch of talk about the drainage, I'll let that stand where it's at. Did the city of Hermosa weigh in at all? I know that the county, Custer County guy asked to get, if Hermosa had weighed in on anything yet.
I have not received any information from Hermosa. I did talk to the Custer Planning Director and, or I believe that she was going to reach out to Hermosa to see if they had any concerns. I believe that this would be in the Hermosa's platting jurisdiction.
Okay. Looks like there's a section line that, between Section 18 and Section 19 that goes through Phase Three. Assume that'll need to be vacated and.
Correct. If they don't want to vacate it, they at least have to waive their improvement requirements through the subdivision regulations or vacate that.
My only concern with not vacating something like that is, is you end up leaving it open, which means other people have legal right to go through, so I, I don't know how we don't get away from vacating the section line, but maybe a surveyor could weigh in on that. I, I think the rest of my questions probably will get answered when the details come forth with the preliminary. Thank you. Further questions? Okay. Would anyone in the audience like to speak on this issue? Please state your name when you get up to the dais for the record and then if we could skip to one person at a time and we'll, we'll address if there's questions.
Good morning. My name is John Preston. I'm the owner of this property. This is John McBride from Anderson Engineers and he's going to answer your questions and between the two of us, we might be able to do that this morning, so.
Yeah, like you said, I'm John McBride with Anderson Engineers. To first off, I can answer your question. We did contact Hermosa, they have, they do have a copy of this layout plan. It is under their jurisdiction and, but I haven't heard anything back from them. Just, we submitted it and let them know what we were doing. It probably would be wise to vacate that section line when we proceed with this, yes. Another question we had is reducing the number of lots on the west side of the property to just a couple of home sites against Shore Road and everything else accessed internally to eliminate the expense of asphalting all the way around. And then just upgrade from where those access roads from there out to 79, if that's a possibility. Either eliminate access altogether or just a couple better home sites and just reconfigure the lot configuration on that side.
That'll have to be between you guys and, and the developer and, and I guess the county. So if you guys wanted to do something different than what's been submitted at the layout plan, then, then that, that process needs to go back through the review because I, I think the, the county folks, both Custer and Pennington County gave recommendations based on.
Just layout.
That layout.
Okay.
So I'm, I'm not going to speak for those folks, we'll let that process work.
Okay.
So basically, this is just your plan and if you're going to change your plan, it would be time to change the layout plan through the layout plan, if I'm correct, Brittany, to the preliminary plan of what you might want to do. I don't know if that eliminates you. You can ask for variances on your, your roads and different things to pave, but I don't know if that, you know, until that, this board or.
know if that, you know, until that, this board or our board decides that that's not okay, then we move forward with, with paving it. But if you're wanting to change the lot sizes and do some different things based on that, I mean, you'd have to change it between layout and preliminary, if I'm right, Brittany.
That is correct, and I would speak with the county highway superintendent and the county drainage engineer because those are recommendations that came from that office. So I think working through that with that department would be, and then if something come up from that and then that proposal for the preliminary.
Especially, I'm sorry. Sorry, sir. Especially if it's their recommendation, they might find some solution with you on, if you change your preliminary or your layout plan, between the layout plan and the preliminary plan, they might work with you on that depending on what you're going to do. So that's who you would call if you're going to change like the road systems or you want to do something different.
What would that do to the timeline? Would we have to resubmit a whole new layout and start completely over or...
No, that could be addressed at the preliminary. So in your preliminary, you would submit, and, and the way that you have it phased, you could submit a preliminary plan for each of the phases, you could submit a new layout plan. It's whatever your timeline is and whatever the recommendations that come from the highway department.
So somebody had asked you, sir, what is, what is the timeline? Because for me, the, the phases and not finishing pretty crucial roads, sir, because phase one might not work out for you, then we're gonna, not gonna have a second access or we're gonna have a road that's in, not in compliance for the, for the next guy that says, you know, Mr. Preston, that was his job, and he doesn't finish it. So how do we get that assurance, or maybe we have to get surety bond on those roads? If you guys decide not to, to pave, then maybe that's the solution, but I don't know on what your thoughts are, sir.
That is a question for John, but the, it looks like a generic phase there, but the topography and the way the roads are set up with turnarounds at the end of every one of those roads and the way the drainages are all configured, they're pretty close to, I mean, if phase one could be just its own, I mean, the, there's no major drainages, they all go north to south or east to west and so, but I still understand your concern and the, the timing is actually more of a question for John.
The planned total amount of time to do these three phases, of course, it's, you never know, but five years for all three. So you're gonna have them done in five years or five years, five years for the green, five years for the red, and five years for the blue? Five years for all three to be sold. Have you sold any lots in this yet, sir, Mr. Preston? I'm a real estate broker. This is my... That'll help. I did Spring Creek Acres, which is east of Highway 79, about four miles. That's the only other one in Pennington County. I've done several in Custer County. And how many, have you done those, those developments and phases? Uh, Spring Creek Acres, we did, yes. So that was Custer County, sir? Spring Creek Acres is Pennington County. Okay. So tell me one more time, you've done this before, where, honey? Spring Creek Acres in Pennington County, which is four miles east of Highway 79. And you fit, you follow through and you, you've got that development done, sir? It's done, yeah. Thank you, sir.
Further questions for the applicant and the engineer? Okay, so I, I want to boil down the process that I just heard you say in the answer to them, so it's crystal clear in my, in my brain. So they, they don't necessarily, wouldn't have to come back through preliminary plan application for this. At this point, the owner and the applicant could go meet with the associated folks that made recommendations that maybe now they want to change their plan slightly, get in, get on the same page with those folks with regards to sequencing of paving of specific access points, et cetera, et cetera, and they could come forth with the preliminary plan with those discussions already in place. Does that...
That's correct. So at the preliminary plan, so there's still two more phases of this. So you have your preliminary plan and then you have your final plan. So even though with the preliminary plan, and I had met with Mr. Preston and we had talked about just doing preliminary plans for each of these phases, because then at that point, you know, when you have to post surety and do those things, you can do them in phases versus over the whole subdivision. So each subdivision, especially with the subdivision this size and you're moving forward, the preliminary plans probably from phase to phase are going to change.
Okay.
From time to time, just based on, you know, whatever sales that you potentially have, you get in there with the road construction, different things like that. So going into those phases and, and they will change. That's why the process you do have, you know, going through to the final plan.
Okay.
So.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions on surety. So on the surety, is there a timeline on surety? Meaning if Mr. Preston finishes phase one and his surety, he passes it off to Brittany and she's going to do phase two and three, does his surety stay with that property, meaning he has, that stays until those phases are done, or does it pass off to the next person?
So the surety would be for whatever construction you're doing. So if he submits the preliminary plan for phase one, the surety would be for all of the improvements that will be part of that phase. So he'll have a breakdown of each of those. So once those are all done, they will go out and inspect, highway goes out with specs, and then it comes in front of the Board of Commissioners and the Board of Commissioners releases that surety saying, yep, all the improvements are there, everything is good to go, and they release it. Then when they submit for the next one, that will be subject to whatever requirements are under that phase.
But if you submit surety with each preliminary plan...
Mm-hmm.
Are all those preliminary plans coming to you at the same time with surety?
I, I am not envisioning these would all come at the same time. Phase one will be at one point and then phase two will be at the, at one point and then phase three.
That would be my point, because then if you didn't have surety for the, the roads and things in phase two and three, then you would end up with the same problem again that we're talking about. So maybe there needs to be something different where the surety is, is through the whole development. And then at that point, if he sells it, then he sells it with, you know, saying you have to post surety. I posted surety, this is going to count towards selling of the property. Because again, if you do it, that, that's the biggest issue, is you post it in two and three when it comes through. If he never does two and three, not that you aren't, sir, but if that never happens, then those roads aren't going to happen because we didn't have any surety to build them in the first place, Brittany. So just, just a concern.
So if you do, like if you look at the red circles on there, those are like turnarounds. So let's say that, that, that phase two never gets done.
Right.
Those will actually be constructed and that would be the terminus of that development.
Right.
And then nothing would go forward anymore. The way that, the way, the way that I'm seeing how it's designed, and tell me if I'm wrong. But in, in that sense, so let's say they do phase one and something happens, they still have those cul-de-sacs there, those round, and so that would be the terminus, that would be the end of that subdivision.
Would they still have a first and second access if they did that?
Yes, because they would still come in off of South 79 and they would still be able to come out on Shore Road and Custer County.
So you would assure that no matter what, that they'd have a turnaround and we wouldn't have a 40-unit rule or anything because we don't have those things?
Right, those things would still have to be constructed because phase one is dependent on Custer County and that Shore Road also. So that is something that we spoke to them about because that's going to be your second access, is coming out on the Shore Road unless they reconfigure it and they come out on Shore Road, you know, to the west.
Which makes more sense because in other areas, it's safety factors and in this case, if they have a first and second access with turnarounds, there isn't, there ends up not being a 40-unit rule or a second access issue because that's most of the time the biggest issue we have, Mr. Preston. So that does make sense in, in yours with the phase one, phase two, and phase three, so.
I believe from looking at this, when they designed it, that's what they had in mind with the cul-de-sacs in case there was ever a point at which they didn't continue on to the next phase.
I'm going to extend on what Deb just said. Let me ask you this. So phase one would include roadways, it would include turnarounds, and all of those things would be designed according to the, the specifications and design requirements right now. But let's, and then let's say they start phase two, but phase two may make the cul-de-sac length longer than it should be. At that point, could it be appropriate for this board to require them to not only bond for phase two, but also the extension of roads into phase three to their secondary access point? Could there be some sort of a scenario like that where to ensure that we, we don't get ourselves in, in the situations that Deb is explaining?
So I would say for phase one, if you look at the way that it's designed, phase two, the only concern would be that there's that one access on the bottom that comes out to South 79 and they would have to go through the whole subdivision without getting to the north. So as a require, as a stipulation for the approval of phase two, in the preliminary, you could require that road be constructed.
Okay.
Into phase three.
So I think that that answers your question, Deb. It, it certainly is within our purview to request that a bond be made for, to ensure that there's, there's no, we, we don't exceed the 40, 40-unit rule and, and the designs for the specific turnarounds, so. Good.
Brittany? Okay, I understand we're still going to get two more looks at this thing. When they come back for preliminary, do you note like the changes that are being requested? In other words, in a set of, I, I don't know how you handle that now. In other words, if they come in, I'm trying to think of what gentleman just said that he was thinking of changing right now. When that comes back on preliminary, do you note that and that the comments from the other agencies that, that would be related like highway, Custer, that sort of thing?
Yes, because the preliminary is a whole new application. So the layout plan is just basically what we consider a concept plan. It's just kind of an overview, hey, let's see what the issues are going to be, let's see what the concerns are going to be, and then they address those at the preliminary. So they'll take a look at those, and those are the times when, you know, the road construction plans, you know, their, their preliminary are submitted, then drainage plan is submitted, so there's a better idea of, you know, the exact plan and the process. And then that way too, that, you know, you stipulate based on, you know, what exactly is going to be done. Like you said, this is very preliminary as far as, you know, you can see that they already had, just, just from going through this process, there's some concerns about Shore Road, so they're looking at changing that, and that's kind of the purpose of these layout plans.
You picked right up on where I was at. In other words, we're going to get an opportunity to look at those changes as they end up getting set in the middle of their lap that they got to look at and they got to pay for down the road to make it a good development. But my last question would be, and this, I think this helps with the release of bonds and that sort of thing. Do you get an engineered set of ASBILs submitted back from these folks that you review then?
So in the past, there has been two subdivisions, excuse me, one subdivision and then another commercial property that we had bonded and we did have plans, we did have inspectors that went out and verified those plans and that information is presented to the Board of Commissioners and then based upon that information, they can release or continue that surety.
That's was, again, my point, so that the commissioners get the final review and can say, this is what's out there, and if something comes up later, you guys can flip to the same print that they flip to when you look at, at encountering something, because many things come up, thousands of things that are going to happen. Thank you.
Chair, Charlie, there's a preliminary, a layout plan, that's the guesswork basically that, that the developers do, and the preliminary plan we see again. So you see the layout plan, the preliminary plan, and the final, the final plan or final plot is Brittany, it's her office. So you see it twice. So this will be a first and you'll see it one more time.
Yes, understood. Thank you.
Further questions? Does anyone else in the audience wish to speak on this? Do you wish to speak on this, ma'am? Okay, just wanted to make sure. With that, I lost my, my paper. Staff is recommending approval of layout plan, LPL 20-28, and at this time, there's 35 conditions. Is there a motion?
So move.
Second. Motion and second. Further discussion? Seeing none, hearing none, noting that their final comments on this were obtained. Roll call vote?
Rich.
Aye.
Charlie.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye.
Sandy.
Aye.
Travis.
Aye.
Kathy.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, brings us to item 11. Thank you. Thank you.
Good morning again. Item 11 is a county board report, and the Board of Commissioners will be hearing the planning commission's recommendations from the September 14 meeting at the Board of Commissioners meeting on October 6th. So there was a kind of a weird timeline there, so they won't be hearing this until the October 6th.
And you guys do a great job, even if we get beat up. Feeling some love today, sorry.
Next item is items from the, the public, number 12, noting that there is no one in the chambers here.
One would be Colin.
Item 13, items, items from staff.
One last thing, we did hire an environmental planner. He is actually in the office, and I'll have him come down at the next planning commission meeting. His name's Aaron Teeman. He has quite a bit of experience, 14 years at D E N R, so he is a big asset to our office. He's, went out last week on some inspections and pretty much hit the ground running, so.
And Brittany, I'd just like to say that you and your office with Colin have, we've had some meetings there, moving us ahead further than we've been in a long time, and your staff has been pretty awesome. You've taught them a lot and let them kind of move ahead in what they do, so getting very knowledgeable on many things. So we've noticed that as commissioners, I don't know as plant, I won't speak for the planning commissioners, but it's, it's been a tremendous help of all the things that we have, or you have and your team have done for Pennington County. Brittany?
Okay, thank you. Next item is items from the membership. Seeing none, I will, I'll just comment, Deb, I, during the discussion, I certainly understand the, the call, the question and to get things moving forward, and Sandra, this goes to you too, but I want to make sure that as a board, we're, we're allowing everybody in the audience that wants to, you know, speak on the item, be able to do so, and that, that this goes back to the CUP decision that was made at the Supreme Court level. So that was my, that was my intent. It's, they've kind of put us in a weird spot as far as the Roberts Rules of Order go, but any questions on that?
No, Chair, that was me. I just don't take well when somebody says we do nothing, we've done nothing.
I got that, Deb.
So I, I apologize.
Loud and clear.
But my, or our staff works their butt off, and we did go out there, we did do due diligence for these people more than once, and sometimes it just gets my going. Most of the time, I just let it go, but I guess I need to quit getting baited by people in one sense. The main thing is just say the facts, meaning that our staff does do, again, a very good job. So I do apologize and, and I wasn't offended when you said not to do that. You are the chair, and I believe I probably would have done the same thing.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that someone doesn't come back later on and, and say that they weren't allowed to assess at the planning commission, so.
You do well, and I do apologize.
No, no need to apologize, just following up after the fact.
Chair?
Go ahead, Kathy.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, my concern was she didn't know she'd already won. I mean, she kept going and going and going and going and going.
Sandy, I, I, I thought, why, why is she doing this? Why is she even, recommendation is already, but...
I hate to interrupt Mr. Chair, but I don't think we should discuss that. I think it should speak for itself, your decision and everything that went into the decision. Discussing it after the fact is not going to help anything, so.
Noted.
I appreciate you guys wanting to explain your decisions and, and the process, but I don't think that's something that we should get in today, so, thank you.
Noted, thank you.
If I may, I do have one, I do have one.
Can I ask him a question first?
Let's go Kathy and then...
What you're saying, and, and I understand why you did it, but you indicated to me that you thought I was getting a little off the subject. And what concerned me was that what happened next proved exactly what I was saying, how quickly opinions vary from the citizen that's sitting there to the attorney to us. And these things then cause additional legal, what would I say, challenges for the county. And these things then cause additional legal, what would I say, challenges for the county as well as the citizens and whatnot. That's the only reason I put that in there. I realized I was getting out of the question.
And I should probably explain myself, Commissioner Johnson. The reason why we want to stay on the agenda topics is because nothing else has been noticed. So if we get off of that, and I don't think we strayed off to the point where there would be an open meetings violation.
Right.
But that's the reason why we have to stick to the agenda items. If we don't do that, then we could get hauled in front of the open meeting commission, and then it's a class 2 misdemeanor for you guys to get off of the agenda topics, if you are found to have violated the open meetings violation. So that's not good.
I believe I was protecting the expenses of this county when I'm trying to explain that, that as a citizen, and maybe I shouldn't be doing that.
And I understand what you're saying, Commissioner Johnson. I'm just pointing out that sometimes when we're getting down a path that might be considered off agenda, that's when I'm gonna come up and try to direct you guys to get back onto agenda, because I'm doing that to protect you, to protect Pennington County, and then to protect the applicants, because that means that potentially this matter doesn't go forward. So that's just the reason why I come up and I appreciate it.
But I knew where I was at. It was what I was saying. I was a little offended at it at first when you said, I think we need to back up and get on the question. I knew we're still discussing the question, and the question is, what do these things do in regards to these expenses from them? We could have another party come in and sue us, and then we've gotta spend more money. I think that's why you need to kind of look at a consensus of those folks that are here, and then I don't think you're getting off a meeting schedule when you're dealing with the people that are here, and she was very contentious. And, and we ended up, you know, exactly where I said, we were gonna end up, we had more and more people. The gentleman came up and very contentious about our staff. So that was why I didn't wanna go without some idea that we all had an understanding what we were dealing with.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson, I understand.
Noted, thank you. Sandy?
No.
No, it's Kathy. Kathy, sorry?
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to clarify something for my own benefit, and that is that, you know, there was some reference made to this board's action or consideration on the construction permit, and I just want to clarify, Brittany, if you would, our responsibilities when it comes to construction permits?
So in our ordinance under the old 507, actually, the planning director does do the approval for the construction permits. They were just in front of you to get any kind of comment or consideration. I know that in the past, there has been some appeal and some request by the neighbors to bring those permits in front of you and the Board of Commissioners for review. So that hasn't been at staffs or something that was part of our ordinance, that was a citizen, the citizens request.
Right now, just so I, that's my, was my understanding, that the construction permit is really at, at, in your department, at your staff level. I mean, we don't get involved in those permits, is that right?
Correct. Under the old 507, under the new 507, you wouldn't either, they all get approved by staff, and then if they appeal it, they would actually appeal it to the Board of Adjustment. So the Board of Commissioners would see those under the Board of Adjustment if they don't like what our staff is doing.
We really don't have any responsibility in that process.
No, the only responsibility you have is if there's any ordinance amendment, or if there's something that came up that you guys wanted to change in that ordinance, then it would be down through the ordinance amendment process.
So without no mining permit, does he still have a construction permit?
Yes.
Because he can still build his house or pool barn or whatever, right?
He can still do the grading and such on his property under that construction permit. He does have a requirement to get it stabilized, so that is going to be, there is some question because it is...
And we are checking on that, right?
Yes, and, and I have talked to Cody about that.
And taking pictures and everything, just like we did last time.
Yes, and with that court order, there was some, some stuff that we had to work out.
The bottom line went through me, she kept taking, talking about covenants, Colin, and we don't do covenants, so that's why I was like, if I was...
Commissioner Head Talk.
Then the covenants is where I would have the issues.
Yeah.
I agree with you wholeheartedly, but I think that we should probably just not discuss what went into that.
Leave it in the agenda item. Thank you.
Okay.
Anything else from the membership?
Move to adjourn.
I second it.
Motion and second, further discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, roll call vote?
Rich.
Aye.
Charlie.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye.
Sandy.
Aye.
Travis.
Aye.
Kathy.
Aye.
Deb.
Aye.
Motion carries, we're adjourned, thank you, everyone.